Deal with the fireworks is, I don't even care about the mess, even though our, uh, a brand-new pickup got just coated with some kind of orange dust. I don't even know what that was. But three years ago, I got hit in the face, just going out to my yard by something really hot. I got hit in the eye. And then, um, uh, it seems like people are buying just more and more every year. And, uh, you know, like the lady that, the people that have the whole full pickup load of trash, a full pickup box, uh, you're seeing more things like that, like somebody across your street or by your house. It's not just one family shooting off fireworks. They have several people get together. They are gonna barbecue and drink beer or whatever they do. And they're gonna, all of them are gonna pitch in and buy fireworks. And you easily have thousands of dollars of fireworks landing on your house, in your carport, by gas cans. I've seen them land right by gas cans and stuff that have gas. And I just watched coals roll down my roof for hours. And I have to wet my roof down because I'm worried that my, uh, house is gonna catch on fire. And, uh, I just think that, you know, besides just the mess, somebody is gonna get hurt really bad. Because the mortars are bigger every year and better, and the fireworks just get, keep getting amped up. And if, if one tube tips over, it's gonna be coming at somebody's head. And when they're all coming at your house, you've got several families, they've got several families at each house putting them off. It's like a war zone. I mean, it's crazy. I've never seen anything like it until I moved here. And I used to live in really big cities like Atlanta and, you know, big, big towns. And it's just nuts. When we lived over in White Sulphur, we would, everybody had to go to a certain area and do their fireworks. And it was a little ways out of town, not real far out of town. But everybody went there and did it. And they had like, you know, the fire department there and everything too. And so if something happened, they could put it out. And I kinda think that'd be neat if we could have like a one place that everybody goes to. And then we got safety people there too, in case. Because I, I feel like somebody's house is gonna burn down, um, or somebody's gonna get really hurt bad. And yeah, the dog thing, um, I, I usually leave for a whole week because they don't just shoot them off for a day or two. It's a whole weekend of shooting them off until about one and two AM in the morning. And so I usually leave and go camp with my dogs because I have one dog that doesn't do well at all. And, uh, this year, um, I didn't take my camper, but I went to, uh, and stayed at a motel that I know where you can't hear the fireworks. You know, so I paid $200 just to get my dog away from it for a night. And it's still, the next night, they still did it like it was Fourth of July on the fifth, you know? So it didn't really help anything. I, I just wasted money. Billy she had one night where she wasn't so terrified. But now she's like permanently messed up. My other dog, she's already passed, but she was afraid of it, but she'd get over it. But this one, every night before bed now, she paces the house and wants to go hide and everything. And she doesn't wanna lay down now. But, um, I just think that either someone's house is gonna burn down. Um, I've heard that somebody had a mortar go off into their house once here. And it went around in the room and tore up the whole room and everything. That's really scary if it's true and not some urban legend, if it really did happen. But, but as far as seeing peo-, you know, like the coals roll down my roof and everything, that's for real. And I see that every year. And it's not just for one night, you know? And I've been hit in the eye. And I've seen them land right by gas cans and not just, you know, I got, I, I put my gas cans up after that happened once. But I see neighbors and stuff and it happens. And we went like a couple of days for a walk after, 'cause we walk every night. But it was about two days after, and there were still just piles of trash. We even took some photos where people just piled it up but left it. They, I don't know why they wouldn't put it in a bag. I don't, I don't know what's going on. But, um, it's probably just, you know, a sign of how society is decaying sadly every, every year. And people don't seem to have the morals that they used to or the consideration. And it just gets worse and worse, you know? But when you've got, you know, people just surrounding your house and they've got thousands of dollars of fireworks and they're all coming at you, it's pretty scary. And that's how it's been, you guys, for like nine years. So I hope that, that we could have like a place where you would, one place where people go do it, you know? Instead of in town because someone's house is gonna, is gonna burn down. Something's gonna happen. And, you know, the city, I don't know if the city'd be sued or what. You know, I don't know what the insurance company would say about that, you know? About the ordinance and, and that, you know, and that people complain and said, "We're scared." And, and it still happens. I don't know what'll happen, but I would hate to see that happen, you know? But it's just became insane. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, I'm Terry Smith. I'm Melissa's husband. And, uh, several years, we've watched those big coals, you know, I mean, you're talking bigger than a quarter, rolling down the house and they're bright red, glowing, you know? And I've got a little water cannon there at home. And it'll go about forty, forty feet with the city pressure. And I've had to wet the house down. I have a big spruce tree on the north side of the house, you know? And I usually keep the gutter pretty darn clean. But if I have a windstorm right before the fourth, I can guarantee you there's needles back in that gutter again, you know? And it's dangerous. Uh, the one guy she was talking about was two years ago. And he had the window get broke from one of the artillery shells. And it was a newer home up here on Hill somewhere. And I guess it tipped over, went through, and went into that window and did big circles in there and then went off, you know? So every wall in that room, the ceiling was ruined. He had to redo everything in that building. But the one day she walks out on her deck and his hit was one of the insulation pieces, like David was talking about, those packings. Well, this year, the ranch, you know, gave me a gift. And it was this other pickup. And, and I just got it. It's been like inside of a machine shop for ten years, you know? So it's like cherry, hasn't been out in any weather, hasn't seen any environment. We went to a motel the fourth, and when I come home, that orange packing stuff is splattered from one end of the pickup to the other. Pete cleaned the stuff up that was less than twenty-some feet from that pickup. Ignorant people, if they see it landing on somebody else's property or vehicles, maybe move towards the alley a little bit more, you know? And they're five feet in front of their apartment, just shooting them off there. You know, they're landing in your yard. I get them from, well, Pete does too, you know? We get them from four different directions. And nobody shoots them over their own house. They always lean it out over the neighbors, you know? And it's just wrong. It's, it's gotten out of hand. And I'm tired of it. I think it needs to end completely here in town.
Thank you.
I'm from Lewistown over there. I was raised there. And the city had a big gravel pit. And everybody could go up there and do it, either that or out of the city limits, where the firecracker stands were. They had lots, you know, that were big enough. And people did it there and it wasn't a problem. The main fireworks were shot off at the fairgrounds, you know? And I can remember, you know, I know there was rain this year, so it was kinda wet. So it got delayed. And when we came home from the motel, then it went on on the fifth, you know? It was just about as bad as probably the fourth. But I can remember the grandstands over there at Lewistown. And the big mortars going up, and it was kinda raining. And they'd come down and they'd be just about to the top of the grandstands, boom, you know? It was not good. And people need to be safe, but they also need to be courteous. And we're seeing less and less courtesy.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Oh, again, I live right next to the garden park and, uh, fireworks. And it seemed like this year was really, really bad. And they seemed like they'd come there. I don't know, may I say, because three forks abandoned. And Helen has banned fireworks in the city. So I think maybe, maybe there's some people are coming here and doing it. But, uh, anyway, at that park, somebody's going over there and lighting them over the park. We walk in the park over there. We got cleaned up all this debris all over the place. And they, they do it in the place so they don't have to clean up anything, you know what I mean? So it's just, but, uh, over the park, which, you know, it's, it's not gonna like, little kids are gonna die or anything. But it's, I can see a lot, uh, I think because, and I come from a place where fireworks were illegal. But you still have them. You, you can't get away from them, you know? And I don't care how many police you have or anything. Somebody go out there and light it and take off, you know, in a big area and goes up in the air and stuff like that. So, you know, it's, it's hard to really police something like that, you know? Because they don't know where it's coming from. Once it blows up, they might run out there and grab that tube and run in the house. So it's, it's tough to find out. But, you know, I come, like I said, come from a place where it was illegal. And you have those little sparklers, those little fountains and stuff like that. But, uh, it's just crazy. I mean, here, it's, and then the park is, it's just the fourth, the third, the fourth, the fifth, and some of that, and that, even Monday. And, uh, it's like, oh, we're gonna stop. We have four dogs. And I understand, you know, dogs, and they're scared. And I, I get it. And I, you know, get ours and stuff like that. So it's, but, uh, sort of talent for many dogs. Everybody's got one, you know? It's just like, might be coming a time, and I hate to say it because, because I'm an old man right here. I used to like fireworks when I was young and stuff like that. And I still like to see them. But it might be coming a time where it's just kind of a thing of the past or something like that, you know, that maybe there's, you know what I mean? Uh, I don't know, maybe make them illegal here or something like that. It's tough to control it. Because like I said, we come from a place where they were illegal aerials. And, uh, you still got them, you know? So it's hard to control. I don't know what the, what the answer would be. But, uh, and you can't find, you can't, sometimes you just can't see where they're coming from and stuff like that. But we had just a barrage. I mean, stuff falling all over the place. And I thought, geez, you know, I think, you know, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, one o'clock. Eh, they don't care. People don't care about anybody else. It's just all about themselves, you know? It's just like, I don't care no way. But, uh, anyway, it's just kinda aggravating in a way. I don't care about it every night. You know, I mean, like the fourth, but you know, it's like every night. And the park is just, you just take a walk over there in the park. The lawn is just full of that stuff. All over there, you know? Just light it all off. And they bring it in and they leave, you know? So that's, yeah, it's kinda hard to get a bit dark. I miss coming in next morning and do it. But, but anyway, I don't know what the answer would be. Because like I said, I come from a place where it was illegal. And they still, boom, boom, you know, up in the air. So, you know, you can't, eh. And I understand, you know, I get it. And I like to watch it and stuff like that. So it's, uh, that'd be, that'd be a tough. It'd be tough. But like I said, three forks may be illegal. You can't do it through quarters. Can't do it in Helen. So I don't know. There's a reason why, you know? Maybe that's, maybe they'll migrate it up here and did it on the fourth. I don't know.
Well, if you have a designated area, you know, I think that's a little more controlled. Thank you. I'm sure the council members have been taking some notes and...
It's just coming, I'm, I'm not complaining. It's better to come if you complain with a, with a suggestion too. And I think a designated area, we did have a designated area where people did a lot and stuff like that, which did a lot of good and stuff like that, Christmas Valley and stuff like that. We did a golf course and stuff like that. But, uh, but, uh, yeah, I'll be golfing for a few, but, uh, but, uh, that's, anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Mr. Crush?
I love being in the minority. So I guess I was staked off the corner of Fourth and North Maple. We had a wonderful fourth. I can tell you, there was three little kids that thoroughly enjoyed lighting their fireworks off. The trash was retrieved. Uh, we had a great time. So I, I'm not trying to be naive to the problems that are at hand. But I will say that, um, I thoroughly enjoyed my fourth. I know my kids did as well. And the trash was picked up, even the ones that did fly into the air. So, um, maybe not throw the baby out with the bathwater. That's all I ask. Um, I, from listening to everyone, I hear that there's a waste problem and a time problem. I think maybe let's start there and see where we can go from there. But like I said, I know from the room, I'm in the minority. I live there anyway. But anyway, I just wanted to state that.
Mayor, can I ask a question to Eric? So from the city standpoint, come Monday morning, driving, you're on the streets all day. How was it just in general for the town as far as debris still out there from Saturday?
Um, of course, I'm, I'm not clipping along, but you know, kinda moving around. I, I did notice some bigger cannons, some bigger tubes and that, in my loops and that when I was picking up trash and that. So, um, I also did notice in some houses, I'm sure it's the, I apologize for my generic term, but the black cats. I did notice several of those wrappers that appeared to be around in that. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll say that there, that was definitely there and definitely around. So.
Thank you. Adam?
I'm gonna set sixty-second timer. Uh, we had a great, we had a nice Fourth of July as well. Uh, we bought one hundred and one dollars' worth of fireworks from close-up kids that are excited to go on their DC trip. Um, I'm sorry for Peter and his neighbor's experience. Uh, I live on Harrison, so I'm aware of the detour. Uh, I did notice some of our neighbors on Harrison that ceased fire on their fireworks so cars could pass. Um, and I'm still under thirty seconds.
Before the record, let that be known as a first from Mr. Six.
We'll give you a gold sticker.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. When council gets back to looking at the fireworks ordinance, I'm sure they will take all of those comments into consideration. And similarly, when, uh, enforcement is our biggest challenge in, in any of these, in any of these meetings. I appreciate your willingness to be here and to speak out. Um, Peter, please don't forget to take your trash with you.
Oh, you can.
Excuse me, your acquired trash.
Yeah, pretty dramatic, huh? All right.
Okay. Um, then the next item on our agenda is the street closure request for the rodeo parade. That is in your packet, council members. Um, it is, uh, 2025. The times proposed for the closure are eleven AM to one PM. And the detour plan is Harrison on the south side. And it looks like Maple on the north side to D and fourth respectively. On the map, the staging area is on Pine Street there. And then the parade route is down Broadway. Cherry. Cherry down to Third and then back up on Oak. And that is the request of the Broadwater Rodeo and Fair Association. Yes?
Um, on the street closure checklist form, they're requesting from eleven AM to one PM. On the letter that is signed and dated August tenth, Form One states that the closure would be from ten AM to two PM.
I think we're probably better off at ten to two. Okay.
Do you want to sign the form?
Yep. And if that is there, a motion to approve the request.
I make a motion to approve the request for street closure, um, as presented for August tenth by the Broadwater Rodeo and Fair Association from ten AM to two PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second that now.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request from the Broadwater Rodeo and Fair Association for a street closure on Broadway, August tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as requested. Is there any discussion from council? Discussion or questions from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is a budget amendment.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Did we miss Ms. Lewis and Ms. Randolph's Centennial Owners Association?
We did. I, you may have, but I didn't. They, um, their issue was resolved and they decided not to be here tonight. The budget amendment request before you tonight is to move seven thousand dollars of appropriation authority from SID five, Special Improvement District, to SID six. That's internal. We just need to get our appropriation authority in the place where the money is actually going to be expended.
Does this require a motion here?
It does.
May I make a motion to approve the budget amendment, as most?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget amendment that will move seven thousand dollars of appropriation authority from SID number five to SID number six. Is there any discussion? Question or comment from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Moving right along to adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget. We had a public hearing earlier tonight. And that summary document will, um, all funds, total anticipated revenue for the next fiscal year, twelve million, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Total estimated expenditures, eleven million, thirty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-five cents, which is in capital projects, one, approximately eighty-eight point three million dollars in frictions and expenditures. Is there a motion to approve our budget?
May I make a motion to approve the budget two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Been moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget. Is there any discussion?
Is there any way that we can get a copy of the budget?
Are there still some copies in there?
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else here?
I want one.
Is there one left? Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there any discussion from council? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, with respect to this budget, uh, once the Department of Revenue has communicated the taxable value within the city of town to its taxing jurisdiction, we will then set the bill levies for the funds that have bill levies, which are the general fund, the confidence and insurance, public employees, retirement system, and fire protection. Thank you. Got my rector back there coaching me. Appreciate that. Angie, do you have an update on our, or, I'm sorry, events ordinance? Is there further? Yes.
We've been waiting to try to have a meeting with the attorney. Is it possible for that to shift with the normal communication instead of what you personally do?
I will check on that. That's on me. I apologize. Okay, fireworks ordinance committee, we've heard some, we've got some input there.
Right. And at the last council meeting, the fireworks ordinance that was in progress was tabled for us to move forward in our ordinance review. I would imagine that after hearing comments from tonight's meeting, that possibly after, um, maybe the telecommunications is done, JB, you guys might take another swing at it? Is that doable after tonight's discussion possible? Vivian, go ahead.
No.
Okay. Um, telecommunications, uh, JB and I have met on the telecommunications. Uh, we have a proposed draft. Uh, I just have one question for JB. And then I think we should be able to present that to council at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Um, also, since the fireworks ordinance was tabled, um, the committee, uh, was formed to move forward for the Title I and the administration and personnel sections of the ordinance. That committee has met for the first time. Um, we had a very nice discussion with both department heads at that meeting. Um, we got a lot of insights and quite a bit of homework coming. And we are scheduled to meet again on July twenty-fourth here.
Thank you. Let's make sure that gets on the board. That. There's no, uh, no update at this time as far as how we are working with garbage cans on Broadway, although I think they're not overly full right now. Eric?
They were horrendous last week.
Okay. So what do I know?
It's, it's a, it's a problem that Evan closed with the camping season. The litter is coming through. Um, with that, uh, and it's amazing how one side of the street is good and the other side, my goodness. There's, there's full trash bags, um, from people's camping waste in, in our little cans on Broadway. I mean, and, and that's the problem. That's, I don't wanna get on for me. But it's just, that's not, that's not what they were intended for. And then, and then that's what, you know? It, it, it really hurts the businesses that could use them, but it, they're full trash bags that are in them, you know? So, yeah. It's great for almost ten months of the year. But then two months, it's, all right. So, anyway, that's just a little update.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, second opportunity for a public comment?
On the trash?
What's your name?
I, 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 I agree with him. But, uh, we got a trash can right behind us now. And a lot of people come there, live out of town or whatever, and they dump. But I'll tell you what, though, I, I know it's, you dump some trash, where you probably go, ah, yeah. But at least you're not throwing it on the road. You know what I mean? The, the litter and stuff like that. At least you're using those. And I'm, I'm good with that. Like, hey, if you wanna use it, you know, maybe out of town or camper pushes, every, with a green mantle. I don't blame them. But, uh, you know, if they, if they use those instead of throwing the bags on the side of the road or something like that, you know, I...
Thank you. But we saw a lot of that.
So, you know, it's, it's nice to...
It's nice to see it.
Yeah, it really is. And stuff. And if they wanna use it, and I was speaking for myself. I don't have the empty, so I'd probably be on the side. You know, they, they come and I see them. Cars are never seen. They throw their trash bags in there and stuff like that, which is, I don't know. I guess less to me is what I see. I guess. Anyway.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Now he's got a little bit of beer. He's gonna, he's gonna get it.
I mean, I, I completely understand your point. My, my only thing that I counterback to him a little bit is eventually there'll be a higher cost because of that.
Yes, and I agree.
And, and, and the citizens of the community are the ones that'll have to face that.
Yes, and you're totally right.
Thank you. Carrie, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do.
Okay. Eric?
Not that I need anything else to do, but Cherry Street is firing up over there. They're in the process now of mowing it. And then they're gonna start setting their survey stakes for the white annexations, if we're still calling it that. So...
North Cherry.
On North Cherry annexation. So, anyway, uh, just wanted to make council aware of that 'cause I caught them down there mowing today. Not caught them. That's what, that's what they were doing. They're just getting...
How dare they take care of this?
I know, right? But, but anyway, um, they're in the process of, of doing that. Um, there is also, the state is gonna start mandating an additional water test, uh, on the city. It's gonna come from each water source. So it'll be coming from our three wells. And each test, um, will be roughly the cost of eight hundred dollars per test, as an astronomical amount. Um, in the beginning stages of working with the state to get them on the ground floor, hopefully get some forgiveness. to hopefully get some forgiveness in the process of, not forgiveness, but some help and pain on for those water samples so that maybe, um, we can ease in with that and that. And I hear they're extremely difficult to take. Uh, they're extremely sensitive. Uh, you can fail them really easily if you don't do your prep work right, so. I'm trying to figure out a school as well to go to so I know I'm trying to get into there, so.
Angie, how many times a year is that required?
At, at the moment, it's gonna be twice. So it's, and, and then I'm hoping it's, it'll be like the, the lead and copper samples this, that I just took, that make this work every three years. I'm really hoping it'll turn into something like that, but of course, it's a new test for stuff and, yeah, so, anyway, I don't know for sure.
Do you know what kind of stuff, Eric?
No. I believe it's related to microplastics, essentially, is what it blows down.
I'm talking, it's all a firework mess.
Um, next meeting, council, I've asked our compliance officer to attend so that he can give you a summary of what sorts of things he's been looking at beyond dogs, which have been really quiet this year compared to last year. Yes, yes, but anyway, I thought that you'd like to hear from him directly. And I don't have anything further tonight. Nate? Angie? JB?
If I could add to the next, the next meetings agenda, I would like to have a brief update on the Southern Passenger Rail Route issue and an update about participating with the Big Sky Rail Program.
Okay. Vivian?
Um, I know Angie and I still wanna work on our full water rate thing, but we're waiting on the RPA engineer and their tables, so I just kinda wanna know who's the one that had a beat on.
They're beating on it now. Okay, thank you. Doug? All right. Well, Nate, what do you wanna do now?
A motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you all very much for attending.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Eric.